Don't, don't stop it.
Bringing the order, the August 2nd, Hamilton County Council. Madam Attorney, I have a little call.
Brad Beaver.
Here.
Mark Hall.
Here.
Amy Mosley.
Present.
Ken Alexander.
Present.
Sue Mackey.
Here.
Tim Griffin.
Here.
Steve Nation.
Here.
Mr. President, you have a form.
Great. That would be rise for invocation pledge by Mark Hall.
Would you bow your heads, please, about God? We thank you for the opportunity to serve your people. We thank you for another day alive. We pray for wisdom and discernment as the council goes about the people's business. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My turn. All right. With that, I'm going to, we have several public hearings, so I'll open up the first public hearing for ordinance CC, let's see, for CC 0802 2023, an ordinance pending county code 69183. So this is the proposed innkeeper's tax. Do you guys have all the information that has been brought forward? Do we have any public comments? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules and act on this?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yep. This is a draft. We don't have a final version. So how can we approve this without a final version of how they're going to spend the money?
That was my question as well when I spoke with Ken. And obviously, being that the hotels are in favor of the tax, I'm fine with that increase, but I do want to make sure that there is, whether it's contingent upon a final draft, I'm not sure, but I agree with you.
Well, we got this draft yesterday at 9:30 in the morning, so how are we going to have time to go through it and absorb it?
Well, when I got the draft, I just assumed because we have now passed the ordinance that it's still in draft form, because it hasn't been finalized.
That's not, no.
Brenda, could you come forward and maybe offer some explanation?
We were asked to provide the draft for review, and apparently, I think it's simply a matter of the watermark not being taken off, because that is our proposed final draft.
So with the motions we have, we can say that based on the document in front of us, that this would be the final?
That would be the final version. We provided it to your legal counsel, and they apparently approved it and moved it on.
Then that is correct.
Did legal counsel approve it?
Yes.
Yes, Chris did.
Chris did, yes.
Correct. I do have some questions, Brenda, if that's okay.
Be fine.
On the backside, what are the provisions for audit on the use? I didn't see, I wasn't able to read anything for how we're going to hold them accountable for the use of dollars.
Well, the Tourism Commission is obliged, oh, you mean for the provision of audit of the people who receive?
Yes, ma'am.
They, the statute, I'm going to point to Karen, because she is really the mastermind behind the statute, but the statute does say that we can ask for an audit at any point. And all of the entities, I think, that would be applying are within audit guidelines.
I guess I'm looking for how we're going to hold them accountable to their performance once the dollars are already there, and they can go to?
There's a series of reporting metrics that they have to provide to us in order to, especially for some multi-year grant.
Yes.
That they have to provide for us.
That was what triggered the question, actually, yeah.
Yeah. There is definitely a stipulation that a series of obligations have to be met. Now, this draft is a draft. This document that you received, which is the criteria, is a draft.
Right, that's what we were referencing.
Oh, no, this is definitely draft. The ordinance that?
That, that was not the?
Oh, I'm sorry, you know, this one is still, I mean, we're pretty sure that we've got it, but we need to go through an August Tourism Commission meeting and another October board meeting, I think, before we adopt it. But the goal is to adopt it by November, so that it's in play by '25. But we're really feeling very comfortable with it, we're 98% there.
The, one of the stipulations that was mentioned in the last meeting was the fact that the projects would then be reviewed and then brought to council and presented during our budget cycle, that we would then authorize and approve at that point in time. So while there's a selection process that has, these are the projects they like and the metrics and this judge on, and that's in draft form, who's on that, how that's done, the, this document that is final, that we're here looking at the ordinance, is they still come before this body and for final approval.
All, all of the funds that pass through the innkeeper's tax are required to be reviewed by you and approved and appropriated. That's in the state statute, and will be in the local.
So it applies to the addition of the innkeeper's tax increase as well?
Oh, absolutely.
And unfortunately, you guys are in the tourism police business, having to hold them accountable to?
Definitely. I, I think one of the reasons that the hotels have been so supportive of us is the promise that we will hold, that these are going to be dollars that generate business. That's our promise to them. I, I felt like we really did that at the state statute level, and it just all looks clear at the local level, that these are not, these are dollars that have to be committed to substantive projects that will make a difference.
Any other comments? Questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
Sorry, on the table.
Oh, yeah, any other? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No opposed.
All right, opening a public hearing, CC 0802 2023.3, residents presenting ordinance modifying the local income tax rates. Brad, has you got your name on it?
I do. I run this all by last, last month. Generally speaking, the state is reducing their income tax in the 2024 year. I'm proposing that we raise ours to match theirs, and that will provide something in the neighborhood of $53 million for property tax relief. I went through the details last month, you got a question, I'm happy to go through it.
Is there any public comments? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, discussion. For, for our benefit, this would still have to go in front of all the bodies, correct?
Oh, yeah. To pass that, we're only one and even a small member of the COAT council. So every entity that collects COAT money in the county is on the COAT council, so we would have, for this to pass, you would have to have a majority of the COAT council pass it. So if we passed it here tonight, then it would go to Carmel, Noblesville, Fishers, and all the other smaller entities that get COAT money, and you would have to have a majority of everybody that gets COAT money to agree to it before it comes into effect.
So to make sure I understand, this is, this will be a neutral, an overall neutral impact on the tax?
To me, you know, other members have had different ways of looking at it, but we got no property tax relief from the state legislature this session. The only thing they did do was reduce the income tax by 5%, is that right, Tom? 5%. And so my proposal is that we would increase the county's income tax, that 5%, and then pass that along as property tax relief. So John Chute's citizen that made the same money last year that they're going to make in '24 would see no increase in their income tax, because what the takes take, move down, we're going to pick up. So their tax burden would be exactly the same from '23 to '24.
I, I know I have thought about this quite a bit. I applaud Commissioner Beaver for, or Counselor Beaver, excuse me, for working on this, that it's, because he's been proactive, he's thinking uniquely and trying to get out there and do it. And I was real excited when I heard about it, and I was thinking about it, and did the analysis, and I shared with my fellow council members, I mean, expanded Excel or analysis that was started by our auditor's office, and then I took it out, okay, if we're giving this homestead credit increase to all the homeowners, but they're losing the income tax reduction, what does that do to their overall tax bill? And it hits different people, different ways, in different communities, based on the size of their home. The higher valued homes, they hit the circuit breakers, will get a little bit more than the smaller homes in the smaller, lesser expensive communities. And what it will do is anyone who rents or doesn't get benefit of the homestead exemption, they're not going to have any, they're not, they're going to forego that income tax reduction. So the senior citizen who's renting and then who has a part-time job, they're going to forego that. The, the single mom who's doing that, who is renting, they're not going to get that tax increase. The young college person that comes back and is living in an apartment is not going to see that tax decrease that they would have if they had. And people who are in different kind of scenarios with their homes. It doesn't mean just because you have a home, you're going to see a decrease in tax, your overall tax level. So I, so I am going to be voting no, not just because it's, it just doesn't equate, it doesn't equalize the, the population, it doesn't treat everyone equally, so that's why I'm going to vote no.
Yeah, the, the main intent of me bringing this forward is to help the retired person owns their home, owns it outright, they've been hit with 15 to 20% property tax increases for the last two, three years, they'll probably get another one next year. Their income isn't going up, they're retired, they're on fixed income, but the, what they have to pay the government, i.e. us, goes up every year because their property tax goes up. Now, we don't control the methodology the state uses and sends to our assessor to assess, and how they assess. The only lever available to local government for property tax relief is this one right here. There are property tax credits for geothermal heating, veterans, somebody who's blind, this, that, and the other, but we don't have control over. The only one we control is this one right here. This is, this is the only avenue available for county government and city governments to have any impact on property tax or offer any type of property tax relief. So it, it was intended for older people, retired, fixed income.
Unworking, like not working.
There are, I, I checked with the people over in the office, I think there are 103,000 people in Hamilton County that apply for the homestead credit. Okay, so if you figure we got 350,000 people in the county, there's two people per house, that's over half, well over half.
But so, many of those will hit the circuit breaker and not get the full benefit.
Yes, that is correct.
And, and?
If, if you are already at the circuit breaker on the home you own, you're already hit the circuit breaker, then the money that would have went to you will go to the municipality, i.e. the city or town that you live in.
So I, I'll be voting yes, and the reason, Sue, I don't disagree with your assessment, but I think because we are one body within the link council, I think that it would be important for this to go on the road, if you will, and if the other entities, 50%, 51% opt to go ahead and move forward, then I think then the majority of the public then would have spoken.
Yeah, I, I made that, that offer or statement last month. If we pass it, I will personally go to all the other entities to, we'll send it to them ahead of time, soon as we pass it here. Look, you're a member of the COAT council, this is on the table, I'm the one who offered it, if you got questions, and I've got a couple volunteers from the auditor's office to go with me, in case I don't get all the details correct. But, yeah, we'll go out and, and it'll be up to them, because we cannot pass it on our own.
Correct.
It has to be.
And we're the only one, I mean, in fairness, Brad is the only one that is even coming up with anything, all right? We haven't seen it from anywhere else. So if nobody wants it, then fine, it will obviously die at each of those cities and then smaller entities.
And I'd like to also commend Counselor Beaver. I, I think that this is a start of a process, and it might be refined and meeting with different municipalities, that they might have a different view on how to do it, and maybe it evolves into something that's a little bit more spread out differently. But there, I think that's, this is the start. It's the start of it, we've got, we're only 6.35% of the lit. There's still 44% that has to be, has to be collected before we can even consider moving forward with this.
Now, Sue, I said it back in the, in the private session, the work session, I appreciate all the work you did, that really, it was really enlightening. We get paid to make a lot of tough calls, I'll be supporting it, thank you for trying to do something for cause, we have to try to do something. The state wasn't able to do anything to offer relief, it may fail at the COAT board, but at least we've tried to offer some relief to the people that are in the 70s and 80s that are on fixed income, that are in that situation. We've tried to do something.
Call for the question.
We have, you have a? Yeah, a little bit, just, I mean, quick, I, I'm kind of on the same side as Sue right now, feeling like how it will affect, you know, one, the local income tax is a huge portion of our budget, how does that affect? And we looked at, as Reuters said, you know, kind of what, what he thinks this will affect us by, or how it will affect?
Is that a question?
Yes.
You ask the question?
I'm just asking how it'll overall affect for our county, I'm just?
Sue, you had the latest conversation with Mike, did you?
Yes, he was very neutral on his, what he was thinking about.
Well, keep in mind, Mike is, Mike is always neutral when you ask him, you know, political questions, and honestly, this is a political question.
He, when, he said it very, it depends on what community you're in, whether you're going to get the benefit of it. Towns like Sheridan, it's going to be harder to get a benefit out of it than maybe Carmel or Fishers. And, but even then, that you're going to get to a level where, he, he said, if you have low proper, if you have, how do you say it? If you have low income, it will, it will be, it will be, benefit you more than if you have high income, because you're going to lose more income tax, or you're going to lose that benefit of the income tax reduction, and your home value, if you have a high home value, you're not going to benefit, because you're going to hit the circuit breaker of the, and I shouldn't say value, if you're in a high assessed area of the circuit, hit the circuit breaker, so.
I don't know if that answers your?
A little bit, I, I, yeah, I, I would say I'm kind of in the same boat right now, Sue, I really appreciate it, I wish there was more control that we had, and I know it's the only one, I just feel like it's?
Yeah.
Doesn't affect everybody here.
Yeah, the problem needs to be fixed down at the State House. This is, this is just doing something that's not going to?
No doubt about that, and, and that's really where the fix needs to come from. Maybe we should choose some leadership.
Any other comments?
The only thing I would say, I think Councilman Hall said, is it neutral? I do not see it as a neutral. The elderly person in Carmel who is not going, doesn't own a home, who rents, will, will not get the money back from the state, where everybody else in the state will get that money back.
That's right.
So to me, that's not neutral.
Correct.
We're not trying to provide that person with some money to help them through the day-to-day to buy groceries. So in that sense, it is not neutral, and I would vote in no.
Yeah, if I said neutral, I misspoke. It's a tough call, it's, it's a 55-45 kind of thing, it's the lesser of two evils.
Well, I, I think we can sit up here, I'm just going to, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right.
For what, for three?
Yep.
Yep. All right, so now we have a public hearing, opening the public hearing for ordinance CC 0802 2023.3. This is the second phase of this process. It's the same conversation, this just puts?
Yeah, we have had one before, we have another.
Yep. Any public comments?
Call the question.
Seeing none, I'll close.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, moving on. All right, now the start of the meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of our July 5th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And is the executive session, is that, is that, remember, I'm about to vote on that separately? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Madam, do we have any public comments? Okay, seeing none. We'll go into reports, our president's report, Brad, you're going to talk about the other project later, so I'm just going to say, we have a, we were all cordially invited to attend the Hamilton County Drug Court graduation starting on August 7th, so I'll pass these out, in my packet, so I'll make sure you guys get these. It's on August 7th at 12:30 here in Hamilton County. Other than that, I have no other, no other comments at this time.
Mr. President, I have nothing.
Okay. Highway.
We met, and there's some items in the agenda.
Finance.
Okay, we had a finance meeting yesterday, just to recap, some issues we had before, but the key thing here, and I'll need a vote on this, is that Finance Committee is recommending that we move forward and do a bond for $5 million for a project Westfield's got at 191st Street, and while I'm sure Highway Committee knows about it, and I'm sure it's a, it's a needed project, the net effect of this, us bonding the $5 million and doing it now, that keeps our tax rate flat for 2024, and we are under no, just the $5 million gets us to the number we need to have in bonding to keep our rate flat. So whatever projects come up between now and the end of the year, we don't need to hurry up or be under time pressure, our rate is flat, and, and that's one of the important things we try to do. But we need to do it now, so it gets on the books by a date, and it transpires by the, it's in October, it has to be done, something like that.
I'm sorry.
They weren't paying a damn bit of attention. It's, it's time sensitive, we have to have these bonds issued by the end of the year.
Now, can, a motion?
Yes, that's a motion. Second.
Okay, any comments? We've, all right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
The only other thing, Mike shared with us a little bit of what the, our budget hearing numbers were going to look like, and you will be really interested, our new members are going to get an experience of budgets. Budget hearings, when the dollar we have as public that has been requested, do not matter.
Any other thing else in finance?
That's it.
Okay, personnel.
We had one poll, I think it'll be later on.
Okay, great. Any miscellaneous? I, I did forget one item I'm going to bring up right now, and that was that we're looking to set a joint meeting with the commissioners and the council. I'm looking to get a date from the commissioners, a few options, and when I do that, I will share that out with you all, looking to try and get that in mid to late August, before our, our budget hearings. Okay. Moving on, tabled business, any? Anything? Okay. Anyone on the table? All right, seeing none. Moving on, do I have a motion to approve the vendor claims?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next item is a resolution, CC 0802 2023.1, resolution for Hamilton County Council recommending 2024 property tax levy limits of the taxing units.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
These are just terms that we send out that recommend they stay within a six-year non-farm income. It's a, it's a formality.
Seeing none?
Just, just a point of question is, and it might be what they call?
Yeah.
Is there, is it the older names on the back, does that matter? Okay, okay.
All right, seeing no other comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next item, resolution CC 0802 2023-2 concerning the purchase of real estate for Bridge 143.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Okay. This is a Dover Cherry Tree, Cherry Tree vote over Vestal Ditch, seeing no other comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on. Next item, we have an interlocal agreement from Sharon. You would remember, last month, we had these for several other communities, and he pulled this one out because he needed to refine it, so now it's been brought back forward. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item 12E, I think we had a misprint here, it should say the Westfield Chamber of Commerce, the One Zone Chamber was already done, so just, just so that we know, I'll put that on the record, do I have a motion to approve those chamber dues?
So moved.
All right, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have the next item is a police benefit retirement plan, and Sheriff Blake Bush is going to be presenting. presenting. Yep.
Thank you very much for having me here today. Before you today is a restatement of the Hamilton County Police Benefit Plan. Included in that restatement are two amendments. The amendments to this plan add additional benefits for a dependent spouse and child of an officer who dies in the line of duty. It increases that monthly benefit from $200 to $500 for a dependent spouse, and from $30 to $200 for a dependent child. The second part of that, the second amendment, is the ability for the sheriff and mayor board who manages this benefit plan to add additional disability benefit for someone who is injured in the line of duty, if it includes a physical or mental injury, they can award a disability benefit from that plan. I have Ben Langhammer here from Green Creek, Virginia, as well as my little lady and chief deputy, if there are any questions, but I recommend.
And this is just the item number one, or are you doing one and two?
One and two.
So this is the restatement of the benefit plan, this would be item 12F1.
So we're going to vote on these independently, so do I have any, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Now, let me make sure I understand.
Okay.
Amendment one is the death benefit.
Yes.
Amendment two is the pension part? No, our pension part's not in here.
The pension part is not included.
These are both the.
These are both the benefit plan, this is not the retirement.
This is the one we're planning on self-funding, right?
Yes.
Both of these, both these amendments will be in the same plan. Is that correct?
Yes.
That is correct, right?
Is that right? Okay, all right, just want to make sure.
That's the disability.
Think about, yeah, okay.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And the pension discussion will come up at budget time.
Yeah, pension discussion is item number two under there, if you wish to.
If you wanted, if you wanted to go ahead and give the motion to approve, or motion to, on the table, I think you should continue on with your presentation, just so we have that information.
Absolutely. So. I hate to interrupt, I'm sorry. Mr. President, was the, the motion for A and B, they weren't combined, so I just want to make sure they're all encompassed.
The motion was for one.
On number one, including A and B. Did, was that clear? I just want to make sure, because it's not.
Is that?
It's like one A and one B, so we're fine?
Yeah.
Yeah, because the restatement is the amendment 12.
Okay, just making sure, thank you.
I'm kind of sorry.
For clarity, we're now discussing agenda item 12F2, which is the third amendment to the Hamilton County Police Retirement Plan. So, there are two amendments to this that are included in the, two amendments in the third amendment to the retirement plan, so it's a little bit confusing there. But this is a death benefit from the retirement plan, so this brings, currently, an officer has a pension, and they die before they're vested in the plan, the spouse, they're not getting to deal that pension, and this is to bring them to 20 years minimum of credit, or if they're above 20 years of service, giving them whatever their actual years of service are in that retirement plan, that benefit then go to the spouse. So that's amendment number one in that retirement plan. Amendment number two in the plan is cost of living raises for retirees. Including in that, we have three options that have been studied by Natri and Key through their actuary studies. This includes, the first option is a 3% cost of, up to a 3% cost of living raise from the ages of 55 to age 70, I'm sorry. Yeah, 55 to 70. The second one is 2.5% from the ages of 55 to 67, and the third option is 2.5% to the age of 68.
I think it's pretty well spelled out in the documents, and you've done a wonderful job providing that information on many times. Do I have a motion to, for either separating, or for all of these together?
I would motion to approve item F2A.
And just for clarity's sake, that is, that is for?
That's related to the death benefit.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, is there any financial impact on that particular amendment?
Yes, there is. Past study, that one is in $20,022,087 annual cost.
Okay.
Any other comments? Comments? All right, we have motions, call for the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I could. I'll let Nancy present it on that before you have it.
So currently, the way those amendments are drafted, both items are included in there. So the death benefit side and the COLA are included in those drafts. There's three different versions based on the COLA, either the 3% to 70, or the 2.5% to 67, or 2.5% to 68. So there would need to be, if we're just approving the death benefit side of things, there would need to be an adjustment to those amendment drafts that are currently in front of you to remove the COLA portion if we're tabling that.
So we have a couple options, then we could bring back that legal language that just includes this, or we could wait and approve it all.
Are you comfortable waiting until budget hearings?
Since this would take effect until January 2024, it might be just as easy to wait.
I retract my motion.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Do you want to table?
No, no, you want to let her retract.
She did retract it.
I did retract it.
But you said table.
Do I have a motion to table this? Until the next?
So we don't have to vote on you retracting? Okay, I'm, I got it, go ahead.
All right, so we have a motion, a second, for tabling. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sheriff Kikin Bush, thank you for everything you do and your deputies. I know that we're committed to doing this, and we'll look at this with our fiscal plan in mind.
Absolutely, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item, we have, we have, let's say, appointee report from Tiffany Pasco and Jack Russell. I told you to keep it within 45 minutes, correct?
I have an hour and 45 minutes, so.
Okay.
Well, like I said, like Ken said, my name's Jack Russell, I serve as one of your appointments, and this is Tiffany. One of the things we wanted to do is probably more, more often, come to you and just give you some updates about what's going on with Hamilton County Tourism Commission, and making sure that we provide you information that we find is valuable, and making sure that we have that connectivity, that you're welcome to connect with us and give us your thoughts, and make sure that we are communicating that with the commission. Really, you already know about the lodging, the lodging tax, but we wanted to discuss, when we talk about, next year, when we talk about the transition in leadership, we think it's really important that, one of the things that came out of our previous meeting was that the board has had, had selected three individuals to be on a committee to select the next president. And both Tiffany and I felt though, it was really important that the commission also had equal representation on that board. When we select, we have some big shoes to fill, and Hamilton County Tourism, Brenda's done a fantastic job, and we felt like both the commission, who is in charge of the financial piece of it, and of course, the board itself, that there should be equal representation there. And then the part that Tiffany will discuss, but one of the things that we really wanted to make sure was, as well, as we begin this transition, was that we look at this early on in the year. We've had some conversations with their board chair, that we begin this process early in January, so that there's some transitional period as well, but I'll let Tiffany talk about that. But that was one item that we wanted to talk about, was leadership transition.
President Alexander, counselors, thank you for the time. It's our recommendation that we look at making sure that there's a stepping stone of replacement. Brenda has done an amazing job, we will make sure that we're filling her spot correctly and accurately. Right now, there is no plan to assist in training, or possibly work on a program that allows her to contract out if she decides to leave at whatever date, to help train and assess the next person in, to make sure that there's an easy transition. Also want to draw attention to the fact that there's a 200K line item for a research committee to help find her replacement, so we want to make sure that you guys are aware of that, and also make the recommendation again, that there's additional, in the meeting we suggested two be represented from the commissioners, but actually, we're looking to make the recommendation that there's equal amount from the board and the commissioners through that whole process. Any questions?
I have a question. I'm trying to remember, I was in your shoes years ago when Brenda came on board. I was on the tourism commission when Amy Vaughn was director, and then, and then Brenda came on board. I'm trying to remember if they, I don't recall commission members being on the selection committee. That doesn't make it, yes, there should be, or no, they're not, I don't remember. Do you, do you have, is there any documents or processes left from way back when that you guys are aware of, that you could look at how they did it back then?
We did discuss that. Again, it's our recommendation with the increase in tax, that there's equal representation on both sides, with the commission and the board, to make sure that there's no favoritism, and there's even playing field, again, when replacing Brenda's role.
And I, and I, if I could just offer, I'm, I understand the desire to be, be part of that, and I think that it makes sense to be engaged and involved in that process. I'm just not sure how this body can dictate processes, or, or statutes, or the, the rules that they are governed by. And I, and I, so I'm, would have to, I would have to turn to our, our legal advisor for what that would be, or, or more importantly, probably reach out to the tourism's legal body to understand if that's even something that we can take action on.
Right, absolutely. So this is an update to make you all aware as a council, to move forward with, or dig in deeper, or keep an eye on that line item for you guys when approving budgets.
Well, I certainly applaud and appreciate you coming forward to give us the report. How many of the, we've had one do this?
I think we've had one.
First one. Can you use two?
Two.
Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your time. All right, I will now open the public hearing for the additional appropriations. Item number one is from general, the first couple are from the general fund, committee corrections transfer of $51,198.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item, buildings and grounds, 144 amendment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Sheriff, 144 amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Probation, 144 amendment.
Motion to approve.
All right, any comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next item, fund 1122 projects, transfer of $51,212.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is a local road and streets requesting $1,315,000. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, these are two separate items for local road and streets. Oh, I'm sorry.
Amy got a second.
Now you got a second.
Yeah, those two, for two different projects, one's on Dunbar Road Phase 1, from State Road 38 to 226th Street, and the other one is for mitigation of wetlands and forests that we are required to do for the project from 31 to Demming Road, and these are two separate, $900,000 and $415,000.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Fund 1175, misdemeanor fund requesting 7,500.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next item, we have a motor vehicle highway requesting 777,000. Do I have a motion to combine?
Motion to combine items E1 and 2.
We have a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve items E1 and 2.
Second.
All right, any comments, questions?
This is the $765,000 of the attorney in 36th Street from 31 to Demming Road.
All right, and there's also another piece of that, which is the $12,000 for the.
It's a correction item.
Yep.
What fund it was paid from.
Great. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Fund 2100, supplemental adult probation transfer of 20,000.
So moved. Second.
All right, comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We have a additional appropriation from refunding requesting $1,560.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Comments, question? Seeing none, this is to cover a shortfall. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next item, we have Fund 4621, I'm sorry, we have Fund 4807, non-reverting computer maintenance, requesting $461,718.
Did you do each? Sorry, did I miss each?
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
You're right, I need to go back to that. Sorry. Fund 4621, the refunding bonds of 2012, requesting 11,500, thank you.
No problem. Motion to approve, it's interesting.
Yep.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, Fund 4807, non-reverting computer maintenance, requesting 461,718.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
It's to do with our hardware, it's our refresh, security refresh, so.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Fund 46, 4816, bridge improvement bonds 2022, requesting 21,200.
So moved.
Second.
All right, this is for construction, supplement to Bridge 310, Pleasant Street, over the White River. Any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item is Fund 4905, digital ortho fund requesting 32,238.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any comments, questions? We know it's this every year.
Yes.